Good evening, Arlington. Thanks for joining us for our first virtual Select Board meeting. I hope everybody's adjusting to their new normal and taking care of themselves. As a preliminary matter, I'd like to confirm our member access. This is Diane Mahan, Chair of the Select Board. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Dan Dunn?
Yep.
Joe Kuro?
Yes.
John Heard?
Yes.
Steve DeCoursey?
Yes.
And to our staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Our town manager, Adam Chapdline?
Yes.
Our town council, Doug Heim?
Yes.
And remotely, we have our board staff, Ashley Marr. Any anticipated speakers on the agenda? Could you please respond in the affirmative? John Leoni, town moderator?
Yes, here.
Here, thank you. I'll now read the introduction to this remote meeting. This open meeting of the Select Board is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth, given the outbreak of the novel coronavirus. Somebody's not muted. In order to mitigate the transmission of the virus and reduce risk of COVID-19 illness, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. And as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which you can find posted with Agenda materials for this meeting, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. Even if members of the public do not provide comment, participants are advised that people may be listening who do not provide comment, and those persons are not required to identify themselves. For this meeting, the Select Board is convening by telephone conference, video conference, via the Zoom app, as posted on the town's website, identifying how the public may join. For Zoom meetings, please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. ACMI is playing a live broadcast at ACMI.tv. You can also go to their website, where they're also streaming this meeting live, and look for replays hereafter. Please be aware that other folks may be able to see you, and that take care not to share screen your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by recording. For the meeting materials, all of the materials for this meeting, except any executive session materials, are available on the Novus Agenda dashboard, and we recommend the members and the public follow the agendas posted on Novus, unless I, the chair, notes otherwise. And now, some ground rules. We are now turning to the first agenda item. Before we do so, permit me to cover these rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the chair will go down the line of members, inviting each by name to provide any further comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, for everyone, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the chair, myself, yields the floor to you, and states your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in colloquy with other members, please do so again through myself, the chair, taking care to identify yourself. And for those items with public comment, after all members have spoken, the chair will afford public comment as follows. The chair will first ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. Once the chair has a list of all public commentators, I will call on each by name and afford three minutes for any comments. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting by the Select Board will be conducted by roll call vote. So, thank you for letting me go through the business of that. Okay, this is a meeting of the Select Board, Monday, March 27, 2020, conducted by remote participation. The first item on our agenda is an executive order on remote participation. Attorney Heim?
Thank you, folks. This agenda item is present just so folks can see on the Novus Agenda what the executive order entails and how it operates for remote meetings. This is one of our first remote meetings, so we're all familiarizing ourselves with the technology at work. But I want to make sure that members of the public have access to the governor's order that essentially suspends the ordinary conduct of open meetings in a physically accessible location. There doesn't need to be any discussion or vote on this matter. We just want to make sure that we're operating in a transparent way with the public and that they have access to this important document. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Attorney Heim. So, with that, we will move to the consent agenda. Consent agenda, our agenda items two, three, and four. We have the minutes of the meeting, March 9, 2020, a request for Arlington High School ice cream fundraiser for Dana Faber Cancer Institute on May 23, 2020, with a rain date of May 24, on the Jefferson Cutter House lawn, from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., Sagara Stogie, the AHS Scoops Club. And we have appointment of new election workers, David Armore Sett, 25 Waverly Street, Unenrolled Precinct 18. First, I'll call on Vice Chair, Mr. Dunn.
Move approval of the consent agenda?
Moved by Mr. Dunn. Next, I'll call on Mr. Kuro.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I second the motion. I would also like to note that I've been in touch with a member of the Scoops Club just to advise them that although we're likely to approve this this evening, that the eventuality of the event going off is related to what the state of emergencies are at that time. Thank you.
True. Any comment, Mr. Heard?
Nope.
Any comment, Mr. DeCoursey?
No comment.
Just for the record, I just want to make sure Sagara Stogie is not zoomed in. And thank you, Mr. Kuro, for your remarks. Mr. Chapdline?
So, now that you have a motion made and seconded, I believe you can call the role, you can actually call the role via roll call vote.
Okay, I was just checking if you or Attorney Heim had anything you wanted to add. I'll take that as a no.
I do not, thank you.
Attorney Heim?
Would you like me to conduct the roll call vote, Madam Chair?
Yes, please. If you could conduct for the consent agenda items two, three, and four, and a motion by Mr. Dunn, seconded by Mr. Kuro, Attorney Heim?
Mr. Heard?
Yes.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
Mr. Kuro?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Mahan?
Yes. So, we have a 5-0 vote. We'll now go to traffic rules and orders and other business. The first item is Agenda Item 5, a vote for acceptance of gift donation of J.J. Gardner. Town Council, Attorney Heim?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This administrative item is on the agenda because it has to be done within a certain timeframe. Thank you to all the folks listening here who are probably tuned in for other reasons. The long and short of it is that the town received a generous donation from J.J. Gardner, and the Select Board's vote is required to accept that donation.
Okay, Mr. Heard?
Move approval?
Moved by Mr. Heard, Mr. DeCoursey?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. DeCoursey. Any comment or question, Mr. Dunn?
None, thank you.
Mr. Kuro?
None, thank you.
I will just say, J.J. Gardner, I've seen her a couple times at different events. I want to thank her and everybody, I think, they believe it was an Elks fundraiser, to raise this money to go to a really important budget delineation that the town of Arlington has. So, with our sincere thanks, as my colleagues and Attorney Heim had said. So, on a motion for Agenda Item 5 by Mr. Heard, seconded by Mr. DeCoursey, Attorney Heim?
Mr. Heard?
Yes.
Mr. DeCoursey?
Yes.
Mr. Kuro?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Mahan?
Yes, that's a 5-0 vote. Agenda Item 5 is now closed. We'll go to Agenda Item 6, discussion and vote postponement of annual town election. Before I call on Attorney Heim, could I ask if our town moderator, Ms. John Leoni, is with us?
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you. Attorney Heim?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As the Board is aware, and members of the public may be aware, there's no mechanism, or there was no mechanism, for the postponement of a town election absent obtaining a court order. I have good news. A few hours ago, the governor signed into legislation an act granting authority to postpone 2020 municipal elections in the Commonwealth and increase voting options in response to the declaration of emergency to respond to the COVID-19 crisis. This bill, which was originally sponsored by our own Representative Dave Rogers and supported by both Representative Garbley and Senator Friedman, essentially is a one-off that allows a Select Board in consultation with local election officials and board registrars to postpone the town election to a date up until June 30, 2020. In other words, the town election would have to happen before the end of June. The legislation was just approved, so the analysis is pretty fresh. But one of the other things that members of the public should know is that the legislation also essentially builds out timelines for folks to be able to register to vote and vote for the new town election. It also allows previously submitted absentee ballots to be counted. So, it prescribes a lot of the administrative things that we would want to see in that legislation. Because the Boards had a, posted on this agenda for a vote and discussion, in some ways, it might be possible for the Board to take a vote tonight. However, I'm cognizant of the fact that we really haven't had time to prepare for explaining all the nuances of this legislation. But it does give me confidence that seeking a court order isn't necessary, and I would seek the Board's perspective on whether or not the Board wants to take a vote tonight to support postponement of the town election, if you'd like to have a discussion as to when that election might be, and if it became necessary for us to convene again, if the Board could foresee doing that before the end of this week. And again, I'm sorry, this legislation was just signed into law by the governor a few hours ago, and we're all trying to sort of catch up on all of its nuances, although it's a relatively straightforward process in terms of the actual vote itself to postpone the election.
Thank you. Not sure if, because I'm not seeing who would like to speak next. I would ask town manager, Mr. Chapdline, everything set with you?
I'm good. I think if you want to, if you want to go down each of your, each of the members of the Board, I think that would be a good way to proceed.
I'm sort of rotating, rotating it, and if I could see, I'd, one of you raised your hand first, I'd do that. So, I will start with Mr. DeCoursey.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I appreciate the comments from town council, which, as he said, we just did receive this law now this evening with the governor signing it, and I certainly would support postponing the election. But I'd like to hear from whoever signed up on the, on the list and the public, and Mr. Leoni, in terms of other proposed dates, most likely in the month of June, but I don't want to throw out a date yet, but certainly would like to proceed with the vote this evening.
Okay, I would like to check with my other three colleagues if they want to have any questions or comments in this time, or if I should turn to our town moderator, Mr. Leoni, and anyone else who wishes to speak on this. Mr. Dunn?
Thank you, Mrs. Mahan. So, I certainly am in favor of postponing the election, and I recognize, and also, I'll just say upfront, I recognize that that's a vote to take to extend my term, which is not a vote that I take lightly. I mean, I reckon, but I do think that circumstances warrant it. But at the same time, I recognize that it's very extraordinary that that kind of vote would happen. But that said, the thing that I'm trying to work through, like, again, without trying to put a specific date, part of this depends upon what we think we're going to be doing with town meeting, and part of what that depends upon is what we think we need for the budget and things like that. And so, if you, you know, you can, we can certainly imagine a world where we're going to be okay doing votes sometime in May, but I mean, of course, we don't know for sure that that's true. But then, and then, would town meeting be in June? I understand that there's this concept that there's going to be legislation that permits us to level fund our budgets, which would permit us to put off town meeting, perhaps, like, you know, even through July and August. But I suspect perhaps the town manager is, or the moderator has given more thoughts to this than I have, and so, any thoughts on that, I think, would be helpful for me.
Thank you. Mr. Kuro?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, I did want to note that I believe that today there were two companion pieces of legislation that went through as well, and these two pieces actually moved off two special House elections, and they moved them off to June 2. So, that seems to have been the determination of the legislature as to a reasonable time period around when it may be safe for us to go forward with this. I have some of the same concerns as Mr. Dunn around the timing of town meeting. We'll want to hear from the moderator, because obviously, let's say, for example, for argument's sake, that we went with the first Saturday after that date the legislature set. So, let's say we went with June 6. It's still, it's a pretty compressed timeframe with a new clerk, and then getting town meeting in. I know we have a separate discussion on that, but we definitely have to postpone it. I guess, one of the questions that I have around our, any actions we take this evening, do we need to choose a date this evening, or do we need to just take a vote stating that it is our intention to postpone the election to a date before June 30, which I think is what the legislation specifies? Because I, we all know that there are a lot of logistics as well involved with selecting a date and scheduling it, and I don't know if we have, have that in hand this evening or not. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Right now, and before I call on Mr. Heard, I'm hearing whether we just postpone, whether we postpone and state a date, right now, June 30, but we need to hear from, before I call on the moderator and anyone else, Mr. Heard?
Yep, so, I'm definitely on board with postponing, of course. I think, I don't know that we have the information in front of us right now to set a date, but also, as far as how far we need to push this out, you'd also like to look at other options for the way we can conduct the election as far as, you know, absentee ballots and mail away ballots, if those are an option for us. It could shorten the amount of time that we'd need for the election. So, but, you know, on board postponing, I think we have a little more discussion to, to have about when that will be and what that election will look like.
Thank you. And before I ask to call on our town moderator, just because we received a correspondence from Marian Marsinkowicz, and I apologize for not saying that correctly, with this agenda item number six, she states that she feels it's confusingly written, which makes it unclear whether the June 30 date represents a date by which it must be determined, or whether the postponed election must actually be held by June 30. And she indicate, indicates that she would favor the latter interpretation, that it must be held, from my reading, by June 30. So, since that's an ongoing question on the table, I just want to put that into the record and call on our town moderator, Mr. Leoni.
Evening. The only concern that I have is that the election does occur prior to town meeting happening. As the next agenda item will show, I have certain limited powers to postpone town meeting in 30-day increments, but, that being said, I would like to have the election prior to, because a lot of interest in the town meeting election this time, and I would like to see those new town meeting members participate in the new meeting, and also have the new Select Board member present at the next town meeting. Whether it's in late May or early June, I think I would be able to do an early June date and do town meeting at the end of the month, as we usually have, that three or four week separation would work for town meeting purposes, but we'll be ready to go.
Okay. I guess my question would be, Attorney Heim, concerning any sort of interface that we need to have or maybe not have with the Board of Registars, does that play into our decision whatsoever?
Thank you, Madam Chair. If I can address a few of the early questions and comments. So, Section 1A of the bill asserts that a vote basically has to be taken to postpone the municipal election to a date certain on or before June 30. So, it does seem like we should have a date in mind when taking a vote. Now, that doesn't preclude the Board from taking a vote to send a clear signal to the public and people who are concerned tonight, just so everyone can understand that that's what we intend to do. I think it's important to consult with the town clerk's office, and the legislation's a little bit, does say that you should consult with both a local election official and the chief operating officer, which in our case would be the town manager, on certain logistical issues. I think it might be wise to at least get the perspective of the Board of Registars in advance of a final vote. But I think that, again, you could take a vote tonight to send a message to the public that you want to postpone the election, and you're going to take the measures necessary to do that. With respect to town meeting, I don't want to get too far ahead, but just so everybody listening understands, the moderator has the ability to postpone town meeting by 30 days. Both the moderator and I are of the opinion that he can do that more than once. He doesn't have to postpone it 30 days. He could postpone it any amount of time he wants. And I do think that the governor's office and the legislature is supportive of a little bit more flexible interpretation of that law, which was originally enacted to deal with things like hurricanes, snow emergencies for town meetings, where it wasn't necessarily going to be a public emergency for this long. So, I do think that you can work out a schedule that allows for the town election before town meeting, and that those postponements could be consecutive with respect to town meeting to achieve that purpose.
Okay, so that answers the registrar question. Attorney Heim, I think, my question would be, is if the motion is to, and I'm not saying it should be, to postpone the election to a date certain, no later than June 30, but not name the date, does that mean, once we get all the information, analysis from you, hear back from the Board of Registrar and town manager, that we would, unless there was a Select Board meeting coming up that was timely, otherwise, we would have to post another meeting?
That's correct, Madam Chair. I think you'd have to post another meeting for that at least limited purpose of taking the formal vote to postpone the election to a specific date, yes.
Okay, and I'm sort of leaning to that, but I want to make sure we're here from everyone, and then also hear from my colleagues, because there could be another option, but I agree that we need to take some sort of definitive step, step, so that we can, when people say, is there an election April 4, 2020, we can say, no, there's not. Usually, at a Select Board meeting, we don't ask for public comment. That's what we normally do, but this isn't particularly a normal time, so I'm not sure exactly how I'm going to handle this. I would look to the town manager, Jeff Monroe, to somehow, either I hear from or I see a name on the screen of any speakers from the public who would like no more than three minutes to speak on this, so I can create a list.
Madam Chair, there is a raise hand feature in the Zoom app that participants could use. If participants use the raise hand feature, I could give you those names when the hands are raised, and you could then call on them if you're comfortable trying that.
Certainly, so I would at this time. It's okay if no one wants to raise their hand, but if anyone would like to give some remarks on this agenda item, which is discussion and vote postponement of annual town election, I'll give that a few minutes. Maybe not a few minutes.
Madam Chair, I do have the luxury of seeing some of the screen, and I can see for certain, at least, that Janice Weber is raising her hand.
Okay, Janice Weber.
Jordan Weinstein has also raised his hand.
Jordan Weinstein. Any of my other colleagues or town manager or anyone else can see raised hands, I'll give it another few seconds. Okay, seeing none. First, I'll call on our assistant town clerk, Janice Weber.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Thank you for this opportunity. I never can find that hand raising button. I just wanted to know about sending out the absentee ballots, if I'm, should hold on for them, to them for now. We don't have them already anyway, but should I send them out as soon as possible? I know other town clerks have and put a note in it to say that their town elections are being postponed, but they did send out the absentee ballots, and I just wanted to know what your feeling is on that, because we may have to order more as time goes on.
My initial reaction would be yes, but I first will ask any of my colleagues, unless Attorney Heim wants to speak to that.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The legislation does include some provisions about voting by absentee ballot, including the, allowing the use of absentee ballots to vote early by mail in municipal elections. So, it'd be something that I'd be happy to talk with Janice more about, but I don't necessarily think that it can hurt to send out absentee ballots, but I'd be happy to talk more about it offline.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, just to sort of piggyback on that point, I did see language in from, I think it was Senate President Spilka, about allowing people to register to vote perhaps 10 days before this election. I don't know if it applied to this or the two special elections that they put off, as well as increasing voting by mail, that absentee could also include any concerns around the coronavirus coming out, and there were a few other points. So, Attorney Heim, am I confusing that with something else?
No, Madam Chair, that's correct. The last day to register to vote, if we use the special legislation option that has just been passed, will be 10 days before the date of the rescheduled election, and the dates will be built out from that, and I'll be happy to work with the clerk's office to help navigate those issues.
Thank you. I'll now call on, I believe, town meeting member, Jordan Weinstein.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to support what John Leoni had stated, and Adam seemed to, Adam Chapdline also seemed to agree with that the, the election of the new town meeting members be done prior to any convening of town meeting, as well as the election of the Select Board. That's all, I just wanted to go on record with that.
Thank you.
Diane, we have hands raised now from Michael Jacoby Brown and Michael Ruderman.
Let me just write that down. I don't want to, so many things going on in my head, like everybody else, and hey, Michael Ruderman. So many things going on in my head like everybody else and hey, Michael Rudeman. Those two are done. Okay, um. Call on Michael Jacoby Brown.
Thank you very much. I just really appreciate your doing this online, so. Those of us paying attention to our health and can do this, uh, just one uh suggestion and uh. Though I hate to make more work for the town, but I hope in the interests of uh. Our safeguarding our health, it may be possible to make more people, allow more people to vote absentee and perhaps having, and I've seen this in other. Locations to have drop off places uh throughout the town, at least in a number of pa- places, so people do not have to. Go to the post office, get a stamp, uh, and then walk or perhaps drive to a mailbox and nail their absentee ballot in. But have drop off places that are walkable, hopefully for people around the town, so people rather than. Having to nail their ballot in by US Postal Service. Uh, would be able to drop them off in various places throughout the town and vote that way absentee. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that suggestion. We're now looking at how we go about our business in a different way. So certainly everything is up for discussion, um, and that's a good point to us, for us to look into. Um, and next I have Michael Rudeman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Appreciate being able to address the meeting tonight. Uh, very brief comment and and one question. My comment would be, if at all possible, I would urge the board to try to set a date certain. For the election this evening. Uh, everyone who's campaigning for a a town meeting seat or a townwide seat has some decisions to make. Particularly in how to conduct the business of that campaign, when to advertise, when to contact voters, how to do that. Uh, we're all waiting for for a a date upon which to base uh those election activities. The question is for, I I would believe if you would direct this to the moderator, I'm I'm wondering, John, would we have to change the order of articles? In town meeting if we don't have uh new members elected? That is article one. Of of the town meeting, uh, can we dispense with that if it, if we had to, or do we absolutely have to have have an election on the books? Before we open the town meeting, and that that's all from me. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rudeman. Uh, town moderator, Mr. Leone, do you have any comment?
That's a good question that hasn't been addressed by the legislation, as I understand it. That's also one of the reasons I would like the election to be held. Prior to town meeting as it is article one on our warrant.
Okay, um, at this point, uh, first I would ask if any of my colleagues or Attorney Heim want to use the wave hand. Um, either to uh provide a comment or perhaps make a motion. If not, I'll go through. Seen none.
Lynette Martin has raised her hand uh from the public.
Okay, um, Lynette Martin.
Hi, sorry, I was muted. Just a quick question that if we do decide to move forward, um. If the if the pandemic lasts longer and it looks like we need to start doing this by. Primarily mail-in vote, a reminder that it might be good to put some thought into. How we would reach um people that might not be native English speakers, if we can put translations out there and also um. That we might want to start messaging out to the community to make sure that they don't uh handle their mail for whatever number of days it is. I forget how long the virus is supposed to land uh be on paper, but to make sure that. Our residents are protected if we're going to be um, and and also our town, whoever at the town level is. Handle receiving the mail because there might be licked envelopes and stuff like that, so just. To give some thought to what safety precautions and communication uh techniques we might want to use, that's all.
Thank you, Lynette. Again, uh. Uh, Attorney Heim, do you have any comment on this before I think I'm going to call on Mr. De Corsi?
Madam Chair, uh, members of the public. To be clear, uh, what the, and I understand that we're all sort of a little bit um hampered by this legislation just being passed. What section one B says is the select board. Postponing a municipal caucus or election pursuant to this act. Following consultation with the local election official, the chief operating officer of the municipality as to logistics feasibility. Vote to reschedule the municipal election. So. You know, whether or not the board feels prepared at this point in time to consider um this consultation with, you know, uh. Ms. Weber and uh. The manager uh i- i- is a little bit of a tricky matter. It's it's, I I can understand. And well, well appreciate Mr. Rudeman's comment, which is that there are lots of candidates, we're trying to figure out. How exactly they should be using their time and resources, especially for, you know, local elections. On the other hand, um, I I just don't want to put anybody in a in a tough spot and feeling like they're prepared to speak to the logistics and feasibility. Of an election on June second versus, you know, June eleventh at this particular moment. I will say that um, I I've tried to keep in touch with our uh local health officials. Obviously, the conditions keep rapidly changing, and so it's it's been a difficult thing for us to uh build out a perfect timeline. And I'm not sure how clear that timeline is going uh to get um within the next week or so. So there's always, there's going to be a degree of uncertainty that the board has to grapple with no matter what.
Um, and I agree, and also we, because our world, our town has changed and changed the way that we can conduct our business, our town business, our. Personal business, and under the law, we do have to, besides everything else that was stated, um. Involve the uh registrars um and make sure everything we're doing fits the timeline, that they can get those things done. So I'm hearing one thing and I am on the ballot, but that. Doesn't affect anything that we can post postpone to a date certain no later than June thirtieth, and then once we've. Put in all those pieces with the Board of Health, with the um Board of Registars, with the um. Assistant town clerk, um, would just come back to a regularly scheduled meeting or schedule one instead, but there could be other options. I believe Mr. De Corsi.
Uh, Mr. Kuro has his hand raised, Madam Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Kiro.
That's okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Yes, okay, um. If it is an order, I would like to move that the board state its intention to postpone. The uh previously scheduled April fourth election and that we uh request um a report. On the logistical feasibility of conducting the annual town election on either Saturday, June sixth or Saturday, June fifteenth. To be reported back to us uh at our next uh scheduled meeting.
Six, six and six fifteen or six?
I believe those. Uh, thirteen, I apologize, thirteen, the two Saturdays, correct.
Six, six, twenty, twenty or six thirteen?
Twenty, twenty, that is correct.
Madam Chair.
Uh, Mr. Dunn.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I would offer a second, but I would also just suggest, Mr. Kira, that the motion say. Um, or other date as they suggest, like, I I love that you're signaling, these are the dates that we're looking at. But just in case they both turn out to be train wrecks, um, I don't want to, like, I'm, like, the rea- we're, we want to leave our optionality open until we ha- until we really, really decide.
Mr. Kiro, will you accept that as a friendly amendment?
I do.
Mr. De Corsi would like to make a comment as well.
Mr. De Corsi.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I I agree with what Mr. Kuro said. I I almost think. In in trying to harmonize sections one A and one B, and Attorney Heim has done a great job of that, given the fact that the the uh. Law was just enacted a few hours ago, um, it seems like we do have thi- this consultation. Process and and clearly we have to take the final vote before the initial election. Um, I think we should signal to the community um in response to Mr. Rudeman's concerns. That perhaps as a date that we will move this election to a date no earlier than um. June sixth, Mr. Mr. Kiro, it just just laid out the two dates, so I'm comfortable with that, but a question for. Town council on section one B of the of the act, the the consultation, it seems. Is if we may have to schedule a meeting and and. Actually have this consultation before we make the final vote. I mean, we can take a vote tonight, but in order to follow the act, it seems as if we may have to have a. A formal consultation and then vote, I just was wanting to get town council's view on that.
Yes, and and I agree that if we don't set it tonight, it's either the next, whatever coincides first. Attorney Heim?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. The uh, Mr. Corsi, that's a good question. A- as as you'll note in looking at section one A and one B, there are. Some slight discrepancies that probably wouldn't exist if there was a little bit more time um for this type of legislation to be sort of. Fine tuned, but um. I think that my interpretation of it is that when it says local election official, we just want to exercise an abundance of caution when it comes. To the Board of Registars. If the Board of Registars is comfortable either, you know. Uh, following the recommendation of the uh assistant town clerk. Um, or they want to take some other action, I don't necessarily think that there has to be a meeting and then another meeting. The other possibility would be that we would have a joint meeting of the Board of Registars and the Select Board, uh, which would be fine, but I I guess. I just want to make clear that that consultation isn't spelled out in terms of having to be. A discourse like the one we're having now. It could be a set of, here's our guidelines and recommendations uh in writing. To the to the select board. It doesn't really prescribe exactly how that consultation will take place.
And uh, before I call on Mr. Heard, I know I may be repeating this again, but um. Once we go through all that and we, this vote tonight does not set a date, no matter what, we will have to have an agi- agenda item in a future select board meeting. Um, designating June sixth, June thirteenth or. Any other day before June thirtieth. Is that correct, Attorney Heim?
That's right. I mean, as I understand the 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 present uh motion as amended by um.
Mr. Dunn.
Mr. Dunn, it's it's to uh, it's that you could take a vote tonight to signal that you won't have it um before June sixth. And that to sort of firm that up, though, you'd have to make a consultation with the clerk's office. The manager, obviously both of whom are represented here tonight, but also um probably at least touch base with the Board of Registars and make sure that they have no objections to it.
Mr. Heard.
Yep, to just quickly, do, what is the feasibility of us, do we have the ability as a board to expand the mechanisms? By which people can vote? A lot of discussion has been made about, you know, mailing a ballot to all registered voters and having them mail back in. If that's something that we can take up, it certainly would affect the date. That we can do the election since, you know, if. For people to vote by mail, the election. Could be hypothetically earlier, or it'd be a date certain, because if we set. For the first Saturday in June, we'd know that we're getting the ballots in the hands of the people and they know how to to cast their votes. And we wouldn't have to to further extend it if, you know, the health crisis hadn't ended at that point.
Yes, and um, I'll, before I call on Attorney Heim on that, then just my interpretation of it, which is just one person. Um, there's really sort of six tenants or six statements of it, which does talk about um expanding, you know, being able to vote ten days before. Whatever the election date, being expanding um so that they're um voting mailing ballots versus just absentee ballots. Um, and uh, there are a few other um. Options in there, and I I think what I'm hearing, and I would like Attorney Heim to be the fa- final word on it, is as we have these um discussions with the clerk's office, the Board of Registars. I would anticipate and hearing from my colleagues here tonight, whatever um uh remedy or resource. Is available of what came out of this Senate bill, we're certainly going to take um opportunity, take advantage of every one of those because. As you have stated, Mr. Heard and others, we now really need to think about different ways um to make sure everyone has the right to exercise their vote, but also. Um, the the right to um be safe and and stay healthy. Attorney Heim?
So the town does not have the authority to alter the conditions under which um. Absentee ballots are essentially cast. The bill does provide for that, however, it provides for. Enhanced use of absentee ballots. That shouldn't though be confused with. Whether or not we have the capacity to do that quickly. Uh, Janice, you might be able to speak better to this, or maybe the manager as well, but. We don't necessarily have enough absentee ballots on hand to distribute them to the entire uh voting base in Arlington. So those are examples of some of the logistics. The legislature has afforded greater flexibility. I don't think that we can expand that flexibility on our own uh to. You know, for example, let people vote by email or something like that, but we do have uh the ability to. But the 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 bill does give increased opportunity for people to vote by absentee ballot, including anybody who um. Who uh, you know, is deemed unable by reasons of uh a physical disability to ask uh to cast a vote in person. So I I I think that there there there's, there's two pieces of that, Mr. Heard. One is, uh, as you said, uh. This can definitely accelerate the um. Uh, when we would hold the election, but the second part of it is only if we've got the ballot resources that we would need to really make that widely available.
I guess I'll leave it to um Ms. Weaver from the clerk's office, if um she has an answer, some part of an answer, or if the answer is she would like to um. Have meetings and further investigate this, um, or maybe have no comment at all. Ms. Weaver?
Okay, um, I would have to order more ballots now if we if we were going to expand it. I already expanded it by about. Two hundred percent, but they're, they are coming in this week. The the only concern I have. Is when will my staff be able to come back to work, because um. I mean, I could probably do it by myself if I start now, but it's difficult and I. Would like my staff to be able to return, and I don't know when that's going to be because, well, nobody knows when it's going to be, so I was wondering if there's any. If anybody knows when everybody would be able to come back. I can order, I can always order more ballots. There is a a fee assessed to it. It's not exorbitant, though.
Um, I guess what I would anticipate is um. Certainly by the course of this week that um. Ms. Weaver from the clerk clerk's office or anyone else who is appropriate um could work with Attorney Heim and and or. Mr. Chapdulane to uh really get a handle on that, and then. We all can make a better informed decision, but I'd like to call on Mr. Heard.
Sorry, I didn't have my hand raised.
Oh, you didn't, okay, um.
There is a, there is another member of the public with a hand raised, but I'll leave that to your discretion if you'd like to hear more from the public.
Okay, I'll take one more from the public because I I am sort of relaxing the rules, um.
It's Jordan Weinstein.
Jordan Weinstein for a second.
All right, one more time. No, I was just going to suggest, there are plenty of printers who will. Print whatever it is that you want, put them in an envelope and mail them for you. So it is possible to just outsource the entire process if if you have the money.
I, I, oh, can I?
Okay, well, all right, um, what we have right now, it seems like, you you know, further discussions need to be have had on that. Um, with the clerk's office, with the registrars, um, unless one of my colleagues, um. I have a motion by Mr. Kiro, seconded by Mr. Dunn to postpone.
Madam Chair, one more comment.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Dunn.
Um, I just want to be clear that it's not just a mon- it is not a money issue that's limiting us about the ability to just mail out ballots to everybody, that's also would require an active state legislature. That's not something we can just take on by ourselves. Is that, I I think that may have gotten lost in 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 that conversation.
Okay, and we'll le- I guess I'd leave that to Attorney Heim to further advise us on as we go through, as my understanding that that was one of the six areas of relief. But maybe not, that we could um not just have absentee ballots, but have um. Voting mail-in ballots, but. Uh, I don't know, Attorney Heim, if if you want to say if I'm correct or incorrect on that.
So, um, thank you, Madam Chair. The um. The act um. Relaxes or provides additional measures by which people can participate by absentee ballots. But I'm, I'm not sure as we sit here today that we can just have them printed up ourselves. I I I think those have to be uh derived from. I, I, I think those have to be, uh, derived from, uh, the Secretary of, of State's office. I, I might be mistaken about that, but I, I, I'm pretty sure that we can't just go to somebody and say, will you print up, you know, ballots, as much sense as that may make in this crisis. Um, I, I think that there are some logistical hurdles that, um, we, we do have to address.
Okay, um, so with that, um, because we do have a motion by Mr. Carroll, seconded by Mr. Dunn to postpone the April fourth, twenty twenty local election to June sixth, twenty twenty, or June thirteenth, twenty twenty, or some other date. I can hear someone who's not muted, I'm sorry. Um, so unless one of my colleagues, um, raises their hand, I will say on a motion by Mr. Kiro, seconded by Mr. Dunn, Attorney Heim, roll call.
Madam Chair?
Oh, Mr. De Corsi, I'm sorry.
Yeah, ju- just, just one thing, as, as you read it there, sixth or, or June thirteenth, or some date thereafter? Is, is, is it, was that the intent of, of your amendment, Mr. Dunn? Because I don't know if we should be selecting a date before June sixth because of some of the concerns that were raised.
That's fine with me, yes.
I'm sorry?
That is fine with me, yes.
Okay.
Okay, so I, I guess, you're welcome. The motion should say, uh, motion by Mr. Carroll, seconded by Mr. Dunn to postpone the April fourth, twenty twenty local election to no earlier than June sixth, twenty twenty, June thirteenth, twenty twenty, or other date after that? If that's correct and everyone's an amenable on a motion by Mr. Kiro, seconded by Mr. Dunn, Attorney Heim, roll call, please.
Mr. De Corsi?
Yes.
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. Kiro?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Mahon?
Yes. So on Agenda Item Six, that's a five zero vote. I just need to clean my, never done this before and I'm trying to make sure I don't miss anything, so I'm also back to paper. Um, we now next go to the much anticipated discussion, and we've had a little bit of it briefly. Um, Agenda Item Seven, postponement of annual town meeting. Attorney Heim?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. As, uh, the board, uh, will recall from, uh, the memorandum that I issued, uh, the town moderator has the authority to postpone town meeting, um, where uh, conditions make it that, uh, members of town meeting cannot, uh, safely attend town meeting. Um, our quorum rules are fairly specific about convening town meeting, um, requiring twenty-five percent of town meeting members, which I think is sixty-two members. We also have a very specific bylaw about, uh, what's necessary to, uh, take on any vote that, I'm sorry, to a quorum for any vote that requires a two-third majority, which is eighty-five persons. Obviously, uh, in the current state of things, um, neither one of those things seems feasible right now, and there is some additional relief that, uh, the governor's been pursuing in the legislature, including potentially giving the Select Board the authority to reduce quorum requirements. Whether or not that's ultimately, uh, a good idea or not, I'm, I, I, it's not my, my position to say. But the moderator is here, um, to talk about, uh, his perspective on the authority that he's granted to postpone town meeting up to thirty days, um, with a declaration without having to convene town meeting. So we can do that without having to convene town meeting, and then if it became necessary, I believe the moderator and I agree that he could postpone town meeting a second time if the same conditions persist. With that, I, uh, defer to the board's discussion and of course, uh, the wisdom of the moderator.
Okay, uh, before I call on the moderator and then, uh, first I wanted to see if my colleagues would like to, say anything, pose any questions before we call on the moderator. I'll, I'll start with Mr. Kiro.
Yeah, I, I just want to, the only thing I want to say is that I, I hope that we can find a solution that does not involve, um, relaxing the quorum requirements, because that would indicate that the, uh, the, the crisis is, is still with us, or the risk is still there, and I, I fear that that would, um, severely depress the, the, um, more senior members of, of, uh, town meetings' participation as well as those with underlying health problems. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hurd?
Uh, no comments.
Mr. De Corsi?
No comments.
Mr. Dunn?
Uh, simply, I agree with the, the moderator that, uh, town meeting should start after the election.
Um, and I agree with that. I also agree with Mr. Kiro about, um, not wanting to reduce the number of town meeting members. I'll leave it to, um, Mr. Leoni in his remarks. Um, people have said to me, is there any way, would it be permitted? And I think it would through the moderator, but I'd be bound by his decision that if we utilized, um, the, uh, seating in the balcony, um, for people, um, who, were concerned, and as well as with the six or whatever foot, um, distance in between them, uh, but, um, certainly going to be guided by, I just want to check, check before we go to our town moderator, if, um, our town manager, Mr. Chaplaine, if, if there's anything I missed before.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The, the only thing I would add from, from all the briefings we've received, uh, from public health officials over the past few weeks is that it's highly unlikely there will be an all-clear sounded, uh, before June. Uh, an all-clear likely won't be sounded until a vaccine is developed sometime over the course of the next eighteen months. So, um, as Town Council mentioned pursuant to another matter, I don't want to weigh in on the necessarily the policy of relaxing quorum, but, um, I, I do think we should all have this discussion, or the board should have this discussion with the mindset of, um, by, by the time of a June timeframe, none of us should be expecting an all-clear whistle to have been, uh, have been blown.
Thank you. Um, I'd now like to ask our town moderator, Mr. Leoni?
Good evening, Madam Chair. Um, needless to say, I've been thinking about this quite a lot. I've had a number of discussions with Attorney Heim on the subject, as well as the Mass Moderator Association has been very active. There is a bill right now in front of the legislature to expand the ability of the moderator to postpone the meetings, but as it stands right now, I can postpone the meeting where public safety is at, as at risk if we do meet. As you'll see with the letter that I have attached to the novice agenda, my current thinking and my current plan is to, as soon as tomorrow with the boards, after this consultation with the board, release the letter that advises the town that it's my intention to postpone the meeting from the April twenty-seventh date to a thirty days hence, which would be May twenty-seventh. Now, I wanted to do it that way, where I would re- release this letter now, so everyone knows and can get ready, that we are not going to meet on the twenty-seventh of April. But I wouldn't actually postpone it till the twenty-seventh of April to buy us the thirty-day time. That would bring us to May twenty-seventh, which is a Wednesday, thirty days, town meeting meets on Wednesday. If, if it looks like it's gonna be necessary, we'll postpone again. But the bill, the bill in front of the legislature now has provisions that the moderator could postpone up to a period of five days after the government clears, gives us an all-clear on the state of emergency. Um, of course, I would have to consult with the Board of Select, the Select Board and the, um, Board of Public Health. Mrs., um, Ms. Bon Giorno, who I did speak with today, and she does agree with the plan that I've laid out. I've also spoken with, uh, Al Tosti, the head of the Finance Committee. Al says that he would, and the Finance Committee will be ready by the April twenty-seventh date, although we both recognize that that's just not going to happen. So, the only concerns, um, we have, and I've had these discussions with Attorney Heim, is if we postpone too long, will it have any negative effects upon the zoning articles, which have certain requirements for publication and public meetings? We'd have to straighten out, make sure we don't impact any of those prior meetings and hearings that we've had that got us ready for the April date. Other thoughts that I've had were if we just meet for the financial articles alone, um, and promise everybody that all the other articles would be put onto a a special town meeting to be held in the fall, that that would require the consent of the board here to put all those tent citizen articles on that special town meeting if we choose that, and to put all the other articles that are there back on a special town meeting in the fall, if it looks like we're going to have to go that far. Um, these are things we won't know for a couple of months, and we're going to have to kind of play this as it goes. There is a lot of, a lot of leeway here, and there is some options. I've also thought about the seating. There's no reason those seats have to be stuck together. Um, we could have the town hall staff separate the seats on the floor by six feet. We can have the town meeting members sit up in the balcony and socially distance themselves. It doesn't matter where they are. Um, with electronic voting, I don't need them on the floor in order to handle the vote. I just need them within the enclosure of town hall. The other option would be if we, um, actually did town meeting on another day, like a Saturday, and we could hold it on the, somehow maybe we could hold it on the football field down at Arlington High School and separate everybody by six feet, as long as the electronic clickers could work, uh, we can find that out. So there are options if we have to hold the town meeting before we get an all-clear, and as, as Mr. Chaplaine says, if it's going to be eighteen months, we probably will have to hold a meeting of some sort. I don't see how we can go about the town's business without that, even with the, uh, powers that are going to be expected to be given in the legislation that should be coming out the end of the week, have, giving the, um, town, through the town manager, the ability to spend one-twelfth of each month previous year's budget per month until we pass another, uh, actual budget, et cetera. There are abilities to do that, but, um, I think we would all prefer to see a town meeting held as soon as it's safe to do so. If you have any questions about the draft letter I have, I'll gladly entertain them.
Yes, um, I'll kind of, usually I do this at the end, and I apologize to my colleagues. I understand that, um, what we're discussing right now is, um, what you can do, um, in declaring a recess and continuation um, of the April twenty-seventh meeting, possibly to May twenty-seventh, but that, um, you don't want to take that official step, or you're recommending with the conversation from others, um, to allow some more time to go by, um, before we actually say May twenty-seventh. My question to you, Mr. Moderator, is, is there, um, currently, uh, according to the law, if you are to, um, make that declaration of recess and continuation of the April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty meeting, is there a certain time by which you have to do it? Do you have to do it at least seven days prior to April twenty-seventh?
It's the declaration, once I make a declaration, it's thirty days from the date of declaration. So if I did it tomorrow, I would, it would be, um, April twenty-fourth. So it makes no sense to do it until the town meeting is here. The way the legislation's currently written, it says as soon as practicable. Um, so.
Now, my, my question is, um, in order to, under the law, whether current or what came out of, uh, or is coming out of the State House, um, to cancel the April twenty-seven, twenty twenty, uh, I'm sorry, make a declaration of recess and continuation, could you literally do it on April twenty-sixth, or for any town meeting to make such declaration? Do you have to do it within seven days, uh, of the current meeting date, within ten days? Or could you go right up to April twenty-six, twenty twenty?
I was planning on waiting till April twenty-seventh.
Okay, that's fine. That answers it. No, that's fine.
I would defer to Attorney Heim. He could check with the Attorney General's, um, municipal office to see if that'd be acceptable, but I think under the current circumstances, we would not have any pushback. And that's my own personal opinion. That's why I wanted to release the letter now, telling folks, this is my plan of action, buy us as much time as possible.
Um, and I guess, um, I'm going to start calling on my colleagues, but that, that's one question for you, Attorney Heim, and I would also, uh, leave a question when we come to you that, from what I, myself and my colleagues are seeing, that it's coming out for the municipal relief on, um, town meeting, um, blanking on my question now. Okay, I'll call on my colleagues and the question will come back. I can't remember. Oh, my question would be when we come to you that, um, I thought I saw some language in there that provides relief if a town so chooses. They basically could float the budget, um, from month to month until a time it's determined, um, that it's inappropriate. Safe time to hold that, uh,
That is.
Town meeting. So I, I apologize. Mr. Leoni?
Yes, so that, that month-to-month provision is in the, um, municipal legislation currently before the legislature. It would allow, um, the Board of Selectmen may adopt a budget for operational expenditures in an amount not less than one-twelfth of the previous year's fiscal budget for any type of account. So you would be able to adopt month-to-month budgeting.
Right, and that's, that was my memory. I just wanted to make sure. So I have lost count of who I called in last first, uh, if Mr. Chaplaine tells me anyone has their waving hand going, otherwise I will call on Mr. De Corsi.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, yeah, I appreciate the letter from, from Mr. Leoni, and I, I, I think just a the one comment, just to be clear too, you've said it, Madam Chair, I believe Mr. Dunn and Mr. Kiro said it, but I agree the town meeting, if we can do it, should take place after the election, so I think it's, it's understood. I hope it's understood here that if there is a continuance with the town moderator, uh, continues town meeting to May twenty-seventh, i- if, if we're in a situation where we're close, that there would be a further continuance to, to allow the election to take place. If, if we're in that situation, we may not be, and, and there'll probably be legislation that will be passed that will make things clearer for what the moderator's next steps are. But I just wanted to make that point clear in, in terms of where I am on the order, assuming we can go forward and drone.
Okay, and because this is novel, and I forgot the rules that I set for myself, um, unless one of my colleagues waves, I, I guess I would ask, um, the, just doing this, um, because it's brand new, uh, if there are any members of the public um, that had anything, uh, uh, Mr. Dunn?
Uh, I guess, I just want to double, I, I think, i- is it appropriate to move receipt? Is, or is there any other action that we would be asked to take in relation to this?
Um, I think move receipt would be appropriate by Mr. Dunn unless I hear something different from Attorney Heim or Leoni.
Attorney Heim is raising his hand, Madam Chair.
Attorney Heim?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, that's correct. So moving receipt, the moderator has this authority, uh, regardless of uh, what the Select Board does, and, um, I just want to note that I appreciate, uh, the chair's comments and other comments. The moderator's trying to thread a needle here, uh, in the law, that doesn't necessarily, uh, afford or doesn't, didn't necessarily contemplate this type of emergency. Again, this was sort of developed in contemplation of things like snow emergencies or other weather-related disasters. It wasn't necessarily something that was contemplating a, you know, two or three-month-long public health crisis. Uh, so I, I, I do concur that I think the best, uh, thing that he can do is to notice people now that he intends to postpone town meeting and wait until the last possible moment, so we don't have declaration after declaration after declaration of recess.
Um, first I would like to, before I call on the town manager and return to my colleagues in any public comment, um, Mr. Dunn has made a motion to move receipt. Mr. De Corsi?
Second.
There's a second by Mr. De Corsi. Um, uh, I would like to ask our town manager, Mr. Chaplaine, since we're again talking about interfacing between the Board of Health and some other departments that you oversee, if there's anything, um, you can add to that or anything we've missed before, I ask for members of the public and then continue on with my colleagues. Mr. Chaplaine?
Uh, no, I, I think the moderator in his consultation with Christine Barjono and Attorney Heim and, and the board just now has laid out a prudent course that we can continue to monitor, uh, as things progress over the course of the next month or two.
Thank you. Um, before I see if there are any other, if there are members of the public, uh, Mr. Kiro?
Uh, no, I, I don't have any further questions. Uh, just thank you to the moderator for, for the input.
Okay, and Mr. Hurd?
Sorry. Just to, to concur with everyone else, then, you know, I think the best course of action is to have town meeting after the local election. the local election. And I think the plan that the moderator laid out gets us towards that. And so I thank the moderator for that.
Okay, before um I go to the motion by Mr. Dunn, seconded by Mr. De Corsi. If I could ask our town manager, Mr. Chaplaine, if um anybody is waving from the public?
Leonard Diggins, Len Diggins has his hand up.
Okay, um, is there, what I'm gonna do is try to get everybody's name at once and not keep going back and forth. Um, I think, I don't know if anyone else is waving, so um with that, I would like to call on um town meeting member Len Diggins.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, so my concern about waiting until the twenty seventh to let people know that town meeting is in recess is that eh they won't know until the last minute. So I understand why the moderator wants to wait as long as he does, but will town meeting members be notified in some way beforehand that the town meeting is going to be delayed and not find out for sure until the twenty seventh?
Um, I'll, I'll definitely um let the moderator handle that. My understanding is right now by this board uh hearing from the town moderator that um that he intends to um exercise his op- option of declaration of, of recess and continuation for the April twenty seventh town meeting, that that April twenty seventh town meeting is not moving forward. Um, and that um so nobody should worry that they're gonna find out a week or a day before the twenty seventh. Um, I'll let Mr. Leoni clarify. There, there will no, be no town meeting on April twenty seventh. Um, but, uh, Mr. Leoni?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. Uh, my intention is to finalize that letter that you have before you tomorrow morning. I'll be sending it to um the town's IP department for posting on the town's website and through the um listservs for all to- all town residents as well as the PMM, the town meeting member listserv. I'll send it to the Arlington Advocate, um, your Arlington, Arlington Patch, um ACMI for the news and bulletin board. Uh, any other outlet that I can to get that letter out to everybody in town so that they know what is gonna happen and the plan of action that I've laid out before you this evening. And on April twenty seventh, when I do postpone, I'll follow the same um course of action and um consultation with uh Mr. Chaplaine. I may ask him to do one of those reverse nine-one-ones um early Monday morning to let everybody know as well. But I, I haven't spoken with him about that yet. I'm not sure how that works, but it's gonna be up to Mr. Chaplaine.
Um, Mr. Chaplaine, not to town manager put you on the spot, but um if there any uh comments you have and or other suggestions or how do you want to proceed with that?
Um, I, I think, let me, let me talk it through with the moderator. I, we, we try to keep the use of that system for an emergency basis, though this is obviously a matter of uh direct public interest. So I, I would lean towards it's an appropriate use, but I'd wanna think it through and talk it through a little bit more with the moderator.
Right, I don't wanna put you on the spot right now. I haven't discussed it with Mr. Chaplaine at all.
Okay, that's fine. Um, and we certainly do have time. We have um three meetings, I believe, scheduled. Definitely April sixth, definitely April twenty seventh and one other. Um, but I guess a benefit here, a Benny, is um if we needed to call a meeting um on a, another Monday night or another day during the week. Obviously, we, it, this is more amenable to being able to do that. So unless um Mr. Chaplaine or someone tells me um any of my colleagues or is there anyone else that wants to speak, Mr. Chaplaine?
No other hands raised right now, no.
Okay. Someone's got their sound on. On a motion to move receipt by Mr. Dunn. Is, I'm sorry, I keep seeing Susan Stamps. Does she wanna speak?
Yeah, that's me. I'm here.
Okay, I apologize. Uh, you got a little echo there. I don't know what that means, but um town meeting member Susan Stamps?
Yeah, turn off that. Hi, um, I couldn't make my video work, but I just was a little I just wanted to summarize what I understand to be the message to the community, um, to see if I understand it. Um, and if I do, maybe have a little addition to it. Um, as I understand it, um, Mr. Leoni's letter would say that town meeting is hereby postponed until May twenty seventh. Right?
Okay, and did you have any other questions?
And if that's the case, I would think that you would wanna, or I would suggest that you might wanna add to the vote that or after the town election, whichever occurs uh first, later. May twenty seventh or after the town election, whichever occurs later. Because weren't we just discussing having the town election no later than something like June eighth?
June thirtieth. Um, it's possible date. Yeah, sorry, go ahead.
No, to, because I, I think the sense of the board, as you've been discussing, the timing of town meeting and the town election is that yes, the town meeting should be after the town election. And so I think that that should be part of your motion. Um, because if it's not, I think there's a lot of people who are gonna be concerned that town meeting is gonna go forward before the town election.
Um, Mr. Leoni, uh, regarding saying May twenty seventh or after town election, any thoughts on that?
I only have the legal authority to postpone for thirty days. But I'm of the same opinion as the major, of all of the board members that the election should and must take place prior to town meeting. Um, I think I stated that right up front and I will continue to postpone until we can make that happen provided I have the legal authority to do so. And I think I'll definitely work with the board to make that happen.
Okay, thank you.
So if I
To clarify, um, Mrs. Stamps.
All right, we, we can't, we can't keep going back and forth. If you wanna ask one more question, Susan. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Leoni, were you done? But that's not the nature of this. I'm bending the rules.
I'm not going to postpone tomorrow. I'm just gonna tell everybody I intend to postpone on April twenty seventh. And I will postpone at that date, but I cannot postpone tomorrow.
Okay, so I, I, I would just suggest that you might wanna just add to this letter that in, in, in no event will the town meeting occur before the town
Before the election.
If you can avoid that.
Um, I, I, that certainly makes sense, especially since we have so many contested, which is a good thing. Everyone's right to do um town meeting um seats. So, um, so I, I'll leave that to Mr. Leoni to take um Ms. Stamps' remarks and um incorporate that into the decision. Um, so on a motion by Mr. Dunn to move receipt, seconded by Mr. De Corsi, uh, roll call Attorney Heim?
Mr. De Corsi?
Yes.
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. Kuro?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Mahan?
Yes. So on agenda item seven, discussion postponement of annual town meeting. That's a five-zero unanimous vote. Agenda item seven is now done. We move to, pardon me, agenda item eight, discussion and vote declaring a local state of emergency. Attorney Heim?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, foremost, uh, what I want folks to understand, the declaration before the board is similar to the declarations that were issued in Brookline, host of other communities ranging from Framingham to Malden and consistent with the actions taken in places like Province Town and Nantucket. Um, it contains a great deal of boilerplate language because these declarations stem from MIMA, the Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency. Uh, they're arguably more important in some communities uh without a strong ma- town manager act. But the primary purposes of a local declaration of emergency are threefold. The first is when you declare a local emergency, you access powers granted by the Civil Defense Act of nineteen fifty. Which sounds a little bit more scary than it is. That act is what created MIMA. And what we use today uh when we have mostly natural disasters uh ranging from microbursts and nor'easters to hurricanes and things of that nature. Um, it includes getting the power to apply for and receive certain financial assistance in the form of grants and other aid. The ability to have greater financial flexibility relative to measures needed to respond to an emergency. And things like the appointment of auxiliary first responders should that become necessary. The second purpose is to make clear that the manager, the health director and our emergency manager, the person designated as our like local MIMA representative, may need to exercise these quote-unquote extraordinary measures in parallel with state emergency declared by the government. And I understand that some folks are worried about what does extraordinary measures mean. It doesn't mean declaring martial law or anything of that nature. It doesn't mean suspending select board meetings. It means the types of authorities that I just mentioned and some others. Um, but again, this is largely boilerplate language that you'll find in all these local uh declarations that are popping up now that the uh COVID nineteen uh emergency continues to sort of spread throughout the Commonwealth. And then the third, of course, is to signal the seriousness of this situation locally. Permit me to pause for a moment to speak on a few issues that were raised to my attention. Again, the declaration does not cancel select board meetings, foreclose the town manager's responsibility to report to the select board or constrain the board's supervision of the town manager. Moreover, with respect to determination of when a local state of emergency is over, it was this office's recommendation that the manager have such an ability so that the town could terminate its state of emergency as quickly as conditions would allow in the event that there's not a regularly scheduled board meeting or to wait at least forty-eight hours required under the open meeting law to have a meeting so the select board uh could terminate the local state of emergency. It was not the board or manager's design, nor was it intended to allow the manager to conduct business in indefinite state of emergency. I just wanna make clear that this is, again, a largely boilerplate matter that its primary purpose in Arlington will be able to give us access to certain emergency funds and regional um, regional uh exercise of resources, uh whether it be in a sort of greater Boston region or within the uh Commonwealth. I, I'm not wedded at all to the language about when the emergency terminates. Uh, but folks should understand that it may mean there might be a lag between the state and town assessment of resp- and response. And I'd be happy to answer as many questions as I can uh about uh about this. Thank you.
Um, I guess my question would be um before I call on my colleagues. Concerning, I know there's been talk about uh declaring a national emergency, which would which to my understanding has been discussed, but actually hasn't been done. Um, it's my understanding in reading through this that uh one of the benefits of doing this is that if a national emergency um does get declared, um, us being in this declaration of emergency here in the town of Arlington um would give us the opportunity to access possibly federal funds that would become available with such declaration? Or am I getting that wrong? Attorney Heim?
Madam Chair, that's correct. So the, the primary function of something like this in a town like Arlington where the day-to-day management is already invested in the manager, the uh Director of Health and Human Services is to ensure that in the event of uh a federal uh declaration, uh which I believe well, there's been a version of it, uh that we would have access to, to certain funds and resources. And the same thing is true at the state level. These declarations are essentially recommended by MIMA so that it's clear to them that there's been a local decision about a state of emergency. Again, some of this stuff is being grafted on to an unprecedented situation. We have um a series of health laws under chapter one eleven that provide certain authorities already to the Board of Health and the Health Department. But those don't fit sort of perfectly into the uh sort of larger response that we need to have on a regional and state level, which is why we're applying uh the sort of MIMA paradigm to this particular situation. Um, and I, I wanna make sure that there's no stone turned left, left unturned, particularly with respect to setting ourselves up to get uh aid from the federal and state government.
Okay, um, I'm now going to ask uh the town manager first if he has any comment. And if not, second, um, if any one of my colleagues is initially waving or raising their hand to make a motion or pose a question. Mr. Chaplaine?
Only, uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I would only just reiterate uh what town council said. The importance of uh making this declaration to give us necessary eligibility uh or potential eligibility for state or federal emergency funds. Uh, and also, um, I think we've made it abundantly clear to the public the seriousness of this matter and um with our several pleas for them to heed the recommendations and guidance that we've issued. But I think the declaration of a state of emergency just furthers uh furthers the public perception of the seriousness of this issue. Um, but that's, yeah, that's, that's all I'll say at this point. And I'll, I'll tell you that both uh, both members Dunn and Kuro have their hands raised.
Okay, um, you need me, Mr. Kuro?
Th- thank you very much. I, I wanna thank um the, the town council for his work uh on this and, and the manager for all his work. I think first of all, I think it's, it's worth stating that um throughout the um, the current crisis, um, the manager has been in constant consultation uh with the board and has kept us extremely well informed uh on more than a daily basis um as to the various measures that, that have been taken. Um, uh, tha- that, that said, I mean, I, I, I do um wanna make a, a few recommendations or a recommendation uh regarding the um uh expiration uh language um at, at the, the uh bottom. It, it strikes me that um i- if this board is taking the vote to declare the state of emergency, then the, the, the ultimate authority to lift the state of emergency should also be vested in the board. But I think that my sense is that we could probably construct this in a way that, that provides um adequate flexibility to, to address some of the uh issues that, that uh Mr. Heim has raised as well as some of the other uh suggestions that we've received from the public. I, I'd like to suggest and, and I, I think I'd have to defer to town council to word this properly, that, that we state that the declaration of um emergency shall remain in effect until either the town manager um notifies the uh select board that the um purposes for the state of the emergency are no longer um uh present. Or the select board votes to lift the state of emergency. And furthermore, that, that the uh state of emergency will not extend beyond um June thirtieth, twenty twenty without an extension uh uh extended declaration by this board. And I, I picked June thirtieth because um that actually mirrors the, the, the deadline date in the um, the election statute that we were just discussing at length. Um, and so I think it would be prudent for us uh to come back together. And it's, it's not a um I think in putting that into the resolution, it's, it's not a statement that, that um, that the manager hasn't been consulting. He has been consulting with us all along. I think it's just, it's a strong statement to the public and it does give us an opportunity to come back together if this, this extends for several months. Uh, we'll, we'll be forced to come back together and, and uh discuss it in, in the, the public forum. So um, if I might put that in a motion, i- if council has the sense of, of the points I'm trying to
Yeah.
Get at.
Um, okay, first, if I could, just for procedurally, um, there's a motion to move approval by Mr. Kuro um on what's, for the select board, with the exception um on the last page that this emergency declaration shall remain in effect either until the town manager notifies the select board or the select board lifts to vote the emergency. And I think the third part of your motion is that this will again not um go beyond June thirtieth of twenty twenty. Do I have that just as a starting point, correct, Mr. Kuro?
Will not go beyond June thirtieth, twenty twenty without a further vote of the, of the board.
Without further action by the select board?
Yes.
Um, is there a second to Mr. Kuro's motion for discussion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Dunn. Um, if I could, um, could I hear from, before I call on Attorney Heim? Uh, Mr. De Corsi?
Thank, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, and, and I, thank you to uh A- Attorney Heim um for putting this together and, and he, he, he's right in terms of the, the language. I, I saw a number of local declarations of emergency and then the language that he's, he's using is consistent with that. Uh, I also agree with Mr. Kuro um that the declaration really should, should be lifted through a vote of the of the select board. Um, I'm, I'm comfortable e- e- either way with, with Mr. Kuro's motion. I, I almost think that um pursuant to a vote of the select board is enough. But for consistency with the, with, with the statute, what we talked about with elections, if we wanna revisit that. for consistency with the with with the statute, what we talked about with elections, if we want to revisit that, I'm fine with it as well.
And I should have said this, and I think I'm correct that um everything I have in front of me, my colleagues on the board have um through the NOVUS agenda that we did receive around the topic we've sort of been talking about right now, correspondence from Marian Marsinkowitz um regarding um the fifth paragraph that we've been discussing about the town manager's role um versus, or not versus, in concert with the uh select board, as well as Patricia Warden, again, um expressing her concern um to uh the select board um plays a part, if not the only part in that recommendation. Before I uh go to Mr. Hurd, I realize that Mr. Dunn made a second, but I didn't allow him to say anything beyond that. Mr. Dunn, did I cut you off?
I did have some other thoughts. Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, so, uh, I actually, the 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 motion, I I can support uh Mr. Kuro's motion. Uh, the motion that I had in mind was uh shall remain in effect until April twenty-third at midnight, or until notice is given. And the reason I had that was effectively is because it brings it to the board to reconsider it. Based, my intent was to for us to reconsider it monthly until uh we, until it's over. Um, but uh that said, uh if the board prefers Mr. Kuro's direction, I'm I'm perfectly comfortable with it. On a second note, I definitely had received the questions about um you know, like, like for us to not give up our democracy by by putting this power with the manager. And I just wanted to just be re- remind everybody that, you know, should we want to, we could convene a meeting, and then we could fire the town manager. And then the new town manager we hired, I'm sure, would be someone who would, you know, end the state of emergency, if that's something we felt like was necessary. So the power still does lie with the board. But uh I can, as Mr. Kuro noted, the town manager has been in consultation with us, and I remain absolutely in faith uh of his ability to do this, and I think he's doing an excellent job. And uh I am very happy to support uh the the motion that Mr. Kuro made.
Okay, um, next, I'll call on Mr. Hurd, which we have the current motion before is made by um Mr. Kuro with the not beyond June thirtieth, twenty twenty date um with the language afterwards, without um further review by the select board. And then we have Mr. Dunn's proposal that um we do this the twenty-third of every month to revisit it. So I guess, as I go through, asking each one of my colleagues, um your thoughts on um the six thirty, twenty twenty, understanding that the select board could discuss and extend it beyond, or the current motion with visiting it monthly on around four twenty-three, uh on around, on around the twenty-third of every month. Mr. Hurd, and anything else you want to add?
Yeah, so just briefly, not to reiterate, but you know, I would support Mr. Kuro's motion. Just to be clear, you know, I do support and have the utmost faith in the town faith in the town manager's decision. And he's certainly, even with a vote of the board, is going to be someone that we look to for guidance as to how we're going to vote, as he's in the day-to-day with all the, with updates from state and and uh federal officials. Um, but that being said, you know, I'm happy to support this motion. I think it's important now, not just for the federal funds, but as the town manager said, to let citizens know that we're taking this serious, and that they should as well. And I think the, a lot of people have some more work to do to uh to take this as seriously as it needs to, uh but I'll support Mr. Kuro's motion.
Mr. De Corsi?
Yeah, um, Madam Chair, I I think I said during my earlier comments, I I prefer the June thirtieth to the to the month-to-month um. But I'll accept whatever the 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 will of the board is, but I support Mr. Kuro's uh motion.
Okay, before I say anything and continue on with this, Attorney Heim, I think we've posed some things to you in terms of remaining in effect until the town meeting. I'll leave that to you, Attorney Heim?
Madam Chair, I think it's very clear. I've, I I think I've got uh what Mr. Kuro's motion represents, and alternatively, what Mr. Dunn's motion represents. So I'd be prepared to amend the declaration accordingly. And I also should just clarify that we're working off of a revised declaration that was sort of redrafted to sort of break language out, to make it a little bit more um legible and to address uh some concerns about the proper name for uh the coronavirus COVID nineteen um outbreak. So uh folks should be looking at the revised declaration if they're following along uh at home on NOVUS. Thank you.
Um, I'm I'm fine with uh either thing, but I I'm fine with the original language proposed by Mr. Kuro. Um, Mr. Dunn, is calling you one last time?
I I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay, um, and just because I did it out of sort, um, I don't know if there's anyone from the public who wanted to, I feel like I'm being disrespectful, say wave in. I don't know what the word.
But we have hands raised by uh Jordan Weinstein and uh someone identified as Jeff's iPad.
If that's Jeff Monroe, no, I'm only kidding, Jeff's iPad. All right, and we'll end it after that. Um uh town meeting member, Mr. Jordan Weinstein?
Yeah, hi, thank you. Um, I just have a a couple of questions about the sort of broad nature of some of the language in the declaration of emergency, and one of them is the um that it seems that actions can be taken by, quote, "the Arlington Town Manager and all personnel and agents," unquote. Um, and wonder whether that, uh those actions can be specified to some degree or articulated. Um, and the second question I have is whether the Arlington, uh under this uh declaration, if the Arlington Police Force is going to be given expanded powers, and if so, what those powers might be. Thank you.
Okay, um, I'll definitely take those comments. I I really deviated from what we normally do on this. I don't know if anyone um wants to speak to that, or if it's um someone, I think, you got all your sound on, Mr. De Corsi?
Yeah, I and and defer to Attorney Heim on this, but I I, this this may be just moving around commas in in that section. So in the in the therefore, where it says town manager, um, you perhaps the the comma rather than being after select board should be after town personnel and agents, and I just want to ask them if that um might address that the concern Mr. Weinstein raised.
Attorney Heim? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, which line is that, Mr. De Corsi?
So in in the in the therefore section, and it were, it uh, one, two, three, four, five, line five, after town manager, there isn't a comma there, but perhaps there should be a comma there. And then on the next line, striking the comma after select board and putting it after agents. So it's the town managers who, the town manager who's taking action appropriate to respond to the emergency uh after consultation with the chair of the select board and all town personnel and agents.
Sure, um, uh, Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes, Attorney Heim?
So I I guess I want to be clear about a few things. Um, I I think that we could certainly, you know, move commas around. Uh, but the town manager already is the um authority that sort of presides over sort of town personnel. So it's it's not an extraordinary change for our form of government. With respect to the Police Department, um, I guess I want to provide some reassurance that there's nothing in here that provides some sort of extraordinary power to arrest or something of that nature that the state does not provide. In other words, we can't make up uh new criminal laws under this declaration. But I will give an example of how these types of declarations um might uh uh sort of uh be relative to town personnel that isn't directly the manager. So for example, um, the health regulations already have a certain amount of power conferred in the Board of Health, but the Board of Health can issue supplemental regulations in the state uh in a state where they're trying to contain infectious disease. And a declaration like this might help them enforce those things. Now, most of those things would be civil enforcement measures, similar to enforcement of our town bylaws, right? Our town bylaws are basically enforced by fines. They're not enforced by, you know, being able to arrest somebody and 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 and, you know, bring them down to middlesex or something of that nature. So um I think we can move the commas, but I do want folks to understand that um, you know, there are uh, most of this is oriented around financial stuff, resource sharing, appointment of auxiliary officers. If you look at the Civil Defense Act, there's a lot of descriptions of what those limitations are on things like auxiliary first responders, firefighters, um, police officers, things of that nature. So it it is, um, the language here is general, but I want folks to keep in mind that it's tied to a piece of legislation that's fairly uh well detailed, and folks can can definitely take a look at that. Um, so I I would be happy to move those comments if you'd like, uh, Mr. De Corsi. Um, and I I I think it's a good thing that the revised draft says in consultation with the chair of the select board, but it's it's not, the town manager is ultimately potentially going to direct you know, health personnel is the most likely personnel on this, to take what measures are necessary. And um you can argue that some of those measures have sort of already um been contemplated in terms of, obviously, uh, this was not done by the town manager, it was done by uh in in unis- alone, but you know, we closed our schools. Think those are types of things that we should be prepared for, uh orders to keep restaurants closed, um to, you know, close other types of establishment like nail salons, um, body workplaces, things like that. Those things are the types of things that are contemplated by this.
Okay, no, um, that's, that sounds good, because again, this is just another two um to uh by stating this declaration of emergency, as Attorney Heim and others have stated.
I have a question here. How about the population density of Arlington? I want to know. This is population density of Arlington. We are a five-square-mile town. How are you handling it? This is a crazy thing. There's no mention.
Oh, I get, um.
I'm not sure. I don't know who's talking, or I just hear someone on. I apologize.
I just muted that uh that this person, uh, as you haven't called on them, and there's two other people with their hands raised. Uh, it appears his name is Ar- Arvind Singh. Uh, if you'd like to put him on the list to speak after the next two, I think that would be.
Yes, I do.
Okay, no, that's that's not for you to, uh, you will be on the list, but who are the two before him? And then I just want to again say to people, um, you know, this is not something that we.
No, I need to have.
I'm sorry, please don't interrupt. Please, you have to follow. I I, we can't have this. We had it at meetings before, and we're now at the virtual meeting. I don't want to start off this way. It isn't argumentative back and forth. We have to follow a process and protocol.
It's not an argument.
I'm sorry, you can't do this. Uh, uh, Mr. Town Manager, could you mute him until it's his? I don't know how he's overriding it, because we, everybody's watching this at home, and I don't think this is reflective of um how we do town government business right now. Mr. Manager, um, who are the two names before, Mr. Singh?
A person identifying themselves as Jeff's iPad and a person identifying themselves as Fluffball.
Fluffball?
Fluffball.
Fluffmom?
Uh, Fluffball, B-A-L-L.
Okay, now I'm I'm going to stop it after this, because, and please, um, I'm not saying that Jeff's iPad or Fluffball um are planning on doing this, but please respect that I've relaxed the process um to try to incorporate everyone. Um, this is not about talking about.
I'm talking science here.
The, the.
From school.
I'm sorry, sir, I haven't recognized you yet, and there's, there's two people ahead of you, and it's really disrespectful. They've been waiting patiently and following the rules. Um, so if you could just please wait your turn. And this is not to argue or to go back and forth. If there's anything that you'd like the board to consider before they take their vote on the proposed uh declaration of emergency, uh Jeff's iPad?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. This is Jeff Alprin, Forty-Eighth Avenue Road. Apologies for the uh
No problem.
informal name of the uh the iPad. Um, yes, I I want to thank you, um, and thank you, the whole board, uh, for um amending the resolution in order to specify that the uh termination may be uh designated by the town manager or by the board. Thank you very much. Um, and uh I have no other comments. Thanks again.
Thank you so much. Um, Fluffball?
Hi, this is Beth Malofcheck. Apologies for the name. I wasn't responsible for that.
And then before I hit start your time, let me apologize for just, I'm not making light of it. I just couldn't. It's a little gobbledygook, so I didn't mean to keep saying different names, so.
That's fine. So it's Beth Malofcheck, Russell Street, uh, town meeting member. I would like to uh thank everyone for facilitating this meeting and enabling the public to speak. Its circumstances, as we know, are unorthodox. I would like to thank also, as the previous speaker did, for the, for allowing the amendment. I think that's um much appreciated. I would like to um ask, if I may, to return to Jordan Weinstein's question. I, I'm not sure I heard an answer to that as to um what has already been decided or what actions have already been taken that this declaration of the state of emergency seeks to um allow, or I don't, I don't, I'm not familiar with the um wording of the document, how it was stated. I I think Jordan had a second question. Um, uh, so my question is, could we please have Jordan Weinstein's questions answered with uh clarity? Thank you.
Okay, um, I really don't want to get into I feel like this, you know, something else that keeps getting thrust upon uh agenda items that really is not relevant. Attorney Heim, if you want to repeat the same thing again, um, but beyond that, I don't know what else there is to be answered, or I don't know if uh anyone else?
Sure, I I'm happy to, I'm happy to uh try to answer the question with a little bit more resolution, if that's like in terms of be of help. So, I mean, I I guess what I'm trying to convey the previous time is that the the purpose of these declarations is to understand that there's a lot of things that aren't anticipated um at this very moment that could come up. But to my understanding, there hasn't been any extraordinary uh power conferred upon the Police Department, nor can a declaration of emergency give the Police Department the power to arrest for something that isn't a crime. So I, it's hard for me to s- to to respond to sort of a general question um about how it might potentially impact the Police Department. The Police Department might be called in to provide regional services to support other communities, and we might be um, you know, depending on how things shake out. I know that some officers in Boston uh were reported to test positive for COVID nineteen um earlier today. It may be that, you know, there's uh, we we have to rely upon some of our uh regional partners. Um, the police chief would have to speak more specifically to what they would foresee as unusual needs. But I guess the thing that I'm just trying to provide some assurance on is there's nothing in this that provides the Police Department some sort of relaxation of, you know, due process, or um allows them to, you know, how, conduct warrantless searches or something of that nature. It's primarily going to be tied to a response to the public health emergency. And so the personnel that are most likely to avail themselves in this particular context are public health workers. So that if there's some ambiguity about whether or not our public health officials are allowed to, for example, um, I think I gave was like close a nail salon, because they don't want people congregating and being in close contact. Um, this declaration might help them uh get to that uh, to the place where they have the ability to do that, if they didn't already. There are lots of things in the public health laws that already outline um certain processes for infectious disease, but a lot of those laws were written a long time ago. And so it's, it's, it's been a while since we've had an outbreak of this nature. And um it's primarily those types of things that I would anticipate this would be helpful for in terms of, you know, authorities that aren't sort of ordinary. I don't know if, you know.
No, that's fine. No, and I I just want to say that um whether intentional or not, um, I I don't think this is the time to uh take what's before us and cast dispersions to the women and men over at the Police Department, um, along with all of our town employees who are going above and beyond exemplary job and um at the sake of their own. and at the sake of their own personal safety, to make sure that, in their family's safety. So I do want to apologize if any apology is owed there, if I've allowed this to kind of stream out. And I just would remind people to recognize the world that we're in and the community and what the town of Arlington is and what we're facing right now. And it's at some point, you know, you make your voice known, make your positions known, but really can't keep imparting this, which really hasn't been something that's been discussed and will continue to be discussed. But I really want to stick to, and I don't want to regret relaxing the rules and letting the public speak. So we have one last speaker, Avril Singh.
Madam Chair, I don't see him as a participant any longer.
Okay, okay, so first, I've written it down so many other ways with the...
Madam Chair, Lynette Martin has now raised her hand.
All right, and this will be the last person, because, Ms. Martin?
Hi, sorry, again, I had a hard time getting off mute. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
So I just wanted to state, I didn't take that last question to be a statement about the Police Department. I just, I feel like they were just asking sort of what would the specific expanded powers be? And I understand by Mr. Heim's response that it's, you know, unknown in this type of a situation, what the response, what would be needed, which I recognize is something that's needed right now in the state. I did want to ask if there's anything that can be clarified regarding, in the language, it says what prior actions, that prior actions are being retroactively ratified, confirmed, and adopted. Are there any specific prior actions that were taken by the Town Manager that we are retroactively ratifying, confirming, and adopting today? If there's something specific, I know some residents were just wondering about that, that's all. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Lynette. Mr. Chapdeline?
Thank you, Madam Chair. There's been a series of closures and restrictions that have been issued and reported to the public via various channels over the course of the past week, inclusive of the school closures, closures of town offices, and the actual work that can be conducted or processed by town offices. Closure of playgrounds today, the announcement of the closure of the dog park, tennis courts, and basketball courts. We've also closed nail salons, beauty salons, barber shops, other personal care services. Today, or going into effect tomorrow when the governor's stay-in-place order and nonessential service order goes in place, we'll be putting tighter restrictions on pickup and delivery of takeout food to make sure that we're limiting the risk during those transactions. So I'm not sure that that's exhaustive, but those actions are inclusive of all those that we've issued over the past week. And again, available via the town website, social media, and other channels as well, and the local media as well.
Thank you, Adam.
Thank you, Mr. Chapdeline. So we have a motion by Mr. Kuro, seconded by Mr. Dunn. What I'm hearing is versus doing this, revisiting it every month on the 23rd. Attorney Heim has the language initially proposed by Mr. Kuro that this remains in effect either until the Town Manager notifies the Select Board or the Select Board votes to lift the emergency, to not go beyond June 30th, 2020, without further recommendation of the Select Board. Do I have that close, Mr. Kuro?
Yes, you do. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Attorney Heim, did I say it succinctly or clear enough?
I've got it. Yes, thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, and I'm going to ask one last time if any of my colleagues want to, before I take this to a vote, to indicate by Zoom waving. If not, on a motion by Mr. Kuro, seconded by Mr. Dunn, roll call Attorney Heim?
Mr. De Corsi?
Yes.
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. Kuro?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Mahan?
Yes, so, 5-0, Agenda Item 8, declaring local state of emergency. Thank you. We now go to Agenda Item 9. I'm going to ask one of my colleagues to raise their hand. Correspondence received, 2020 Patriots Day cancellation by Laura Muncy, Parade Committee?
Move approval, or excuse me, move receipt.
We have move receipt by Mr. Dunn. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Hurd. If anybody wants to discuss this, if not, for my colleagues on a motion, move receipt by Mr. Dunn, seconded by Mr. Hurd, roll call Attorney Heim?
Mr. De Corsi?
Yes.
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. Kuro?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Mahan?
Yes, and that's a unanimous vote, our move receipt, where Ms. Muncy recognizes as the rest of the town that the Patriots Day is a great community event, historical event, but in light of the current times that we're in, it wouldn't be safe for anyone to have it this year, and we look forward to next year. With that, I will move on to new business. Attorney Heim?
No new business.
Town Manager, Mr. Chapdeline?
I have no new business. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Hurd?
No new business.
Mr. Kuro?
I just want to say, you know, we've been talking this evening about a number of, you know, actions in relation to the current public health emergency, and I'm sure we're all in accord in thanking our, not only Mr. Chapdeline and his staff and Mr. Heim, but our public health and first responders, professionals in the town, and the others within town government who have made such a sacrifice during this time, as well as all of our small business owners and our families. We know it's a, it's a big sacrifice, our healthcare workers, supermarket workers. I was up at the supermarket in the Heights this past weekend, and I saw that the store was being very disciplined about letting only a certain number of people in, and the people who were lining up were just automatically spacing themselves six feet apart, six feet apart. So, I mean, I think to our residents, it's just, we have to thank everyone who's been cooperating with all of the information that's been, been coming out. And the last I'll say, our public schools, I know that the teachers and councils are really working to try to provide our students with some learning and enrichment during this time. And I'll just say that I noticed that one of the things that was sent out by the Counseling Office was a number of suggestions to address stress and anxiety during this time. And I think that's very real, probably for all, for all of us. And there are a number of suggestions of resources, and I'll just say as an aside that one of the resources was actually looking at webcams of live animals. And our family has actually gone to that, looking at the live panda cams. And I'll say that after this evening's meeting, I am very much empathizing with the pandas being within the enclosed space and on the camera with everyone. But whatever outlet folks have, I mean, please do address your stress and anxiety, and take a look on the town website. There are resources, mental health resources, if folks are feeling really stressed and anxiety during this time. We'll get through it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. De Corsi?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. And this may not be new business, but just a question. Are you going to address the scheduling of our next meeting? Because it seems like we need a meeting before April 4th, and I don't know if that's already on our, already planned.
Not as of, what, would you want the meeting before the 4th?
Well, maybe a question for Attorney, don't, don't we need to take the official vote, Attorney Heim, before, before Election Day?
That's correct. That's, yes, Mr. De Corsi, that's correct. So we would either want to have a meeting at the end of this week, or probably next Monday, in the ideal scenario.
Okay, so why don't we propose, and thank you, Mr. De Corsi, for remembering to take care of that. If, with my colleague's permission, can we look at a meeting on March 30th? Mr. Dunn?
My calendar appears to be wide open.
I was going to say, if anyone has, no, sorry, Mr. Kuro?
Yeah, that would be fine.
Mr. Hurd?
Yep, any day.
Mr. De Corsi?
That's fine.
Okay, and Mr. De Corsi, we will schedule a meeting for March 30th, 2020, again through, a virtual meeting through Zoom, to commence at 7:15 PM. Is that your intent?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any other new business, Mr. De Corsi?
No, Madam Chair.
Mr. Dunn?
No new business.
I guess, just two things. I've certainly done my best to do this first virtual Select Board meeting. And I've also been going through uncharted territory. I guess I would say to, first to Attorney Heim, where this is new and new technology. And I can hear Kevin Greeley in my head saying, finally, you guys did this. This is what I wanted for 15, 20 years. Yes, Kevin, I'm sorry. We did do it. I guess I would ask Attorney Heim, and I'd be surprised if there were, but if there are any guidelines in terms of this new virtual Select Board meeting through Zoom, to provide that to the Board, as well as, I would ask my colleagues to feel free if anything I did as chair, didn't do as chair tonight, that would make this a more effective meeting. I think eventually, at some point, when appropriate, it should be perhaps an agenda item where everybody talks about, my colleagues, thank you, have given me the leeway to sort of expand how a Select Board meeting is done, but because we're doing it in a different way, I felt the need in the times that we're in that people should speak. And then lastly, I just want to say, you know, looking for any information, your best resource is the town website, ArlingtonMA.gov. I know there's lots of information out there, but anything that you want, that you can take to the bank that's been fact-checked and fact-based and, you know, is representative of the town, you know, please go there, go there to sign up for Town Alerts, sign up for the Reverse 911, as well as to connect to any of the departments. And I agree with Mr. Kuro, my colleagues, these are stressful times. They are anxiety-ridden. You know, please don't watch the news 24/7. There are resources that are available through our Board of Health. Our State Senator Cindy Friedman has been a champion, has recently received some awards and gotten some really important legislation through. There's also on our town website, as well as Mass.gov, resources to help you take care of your whole body, mind, and soul. I hope the Select Board tonight has demonstrated that, you know, we're rising to the occasion, we're continuing on a new way and getting the business done, so you can rest assured with that. And any one of us is available for you. But again, Arlington, ArlingtonMA.gov, that should be your first go-to. Thank you for joining us in this forum. Our next scheduled Board meeting is April 4th, as Mr. De Corsi raised, 2020, at 17:00. With that, I will take a motion to adjourn by Mr. Dunn?
Just correcting on the date. I think we didn't, we just say March 30th for the next meeting?
Oh, March 30th, I apologize. Yes, March 30th, 2020.
Move adjournment.
Move by Mr. Dunn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Second by Mr. De Corsi on a motion to adjourn by Mr. Dunn, seconded by Mr. De Corsi. Roll call Attorney Heim, please?
Mr. De Corsi?
Yes.
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. Kuro?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Mahan?
Yes, and good night and God bless Arlington. We will see you on March 30th, 2020.